Yeah. Yep. Takes a minute for it to go live anyway. Being recorded. Good. Awesome. Smithville Board of Alderman Work Session is now called to order. Up first is the utility rate study.
Mayor, if I might, just in advance of that, tonight really marks the beginning or the continuation of review of items that will be presented as part of the budget process. Information presented tonight will go into the recommended budget presented to you all in August. Over the course of the next several work sessions, we also will be presenting information, including the sidewalk program discussion that Gina will be presenting this evening. That's as a result of work at the governing body retreat last month. In the next few weeks, we'll also be talking about employee compensation and benefits, staffing and overlay programs. All of those were identified as priorities by you all in the, in the governing body retreats. We're providing some information and as that, that process evolves, looking for direction is what to include in the budget that will be reviewed on August 16th. So Stephen, are you going to provide some introduction on the utility rate study or? Sorry, put you on the spot there.
Okay. Stephen Larson, Finance Director, just wanted to thank Raff Tellus for the work they've done for us. The board approved a resolution a few months ago that engaged Raff Tellus as a consultant to do a utility rate study. The information they're going to present tonight will have recommendations for next year's budget for the rates along with, as long as with a long range rate plan as well. And so he'll take you through that information and welcome to ask any questions about the rate study along the way.
Great. Thanks Cynthia and Stephen. So I'm going to go through my presentation here on the financial planning and rate study we've done for the water and sewer utilities. We did a similar study about five years ago and those recommendations were implemented. But this time around, there's a much more significant capital investments that need to be made in both the water and sewer system to accommodate growth within the city. So we'll see the impact of that on utility rates as we go through this presentation. If you have any questions, please, you know, this is a work session, feel free to stop me as we're going through and we can talk about it whenever it comes up instead of waiting till the end. Gotcha. Is it in presentation mode Cynthia? Am I pressing the wrong button?
Yeah, every single time.
It decides not to work. Oh yeah, that'll work. Maybe. Thank you. So overall, we're going to talk about the rate study process, just give you a little background on exactly what we did for the city in terms of the process and just give you a brief overview of that. And then we'll talk about the proposed financial plan, which is really, you know, where each the water and sewer utility needs to go. And then we'll talk about impact fees, which is a piece we looked at, but a little bit separate. It's a slightly different approach than the rates and charges. And then we'll open it up to any final discussion and questions. But as I said, if you have questions, you know, give the, this is a workshop, please feel free to stop me. Oh, well, that's the wrong button, isn't it? Oh. Here it is. Right? Yeah. You told me to scroll and I pressed the button instead. It was all my fault. So in terms of the financial planning process, there's a couple of key things that I just want to give you an overview on. So the financial plan inputs include your budget and what's most important is probably the capital improvement plan. Because this is the one area where there may or may not be flexibility just pending. And certainly that's where we spent most of the time working with city staff was making sure we had the capital improvement plan, right? Because it does have such a significant impact overall on everything. Other things are the build usage, and this is something I'll talk a little bit more about, you know, looking at what's been historically built and what we expect to be built in terms of new customers and how much each customer uses. And that's an important input and I'll talk a little bit about some of the considerations there. In terms of capital project funding, we look at a mix of, you know, what should be funded with cash revenue generated from operation of the utility versus what we want to borrow money for use debt for. And then in terms of fiscal policies, there's a couple that go in there, debt service coverage. When we borrow money, we promise that we will have a certain amount of revenue above our requirements. And then you don't want to promise that you'll only have exactly that amount of revenue. So what kind of cushion do we want to have in terms of the coverage? And then the other piece is cash reserves. What's appropriate cash reserve for a utility? It wasn't in the right spot, I don't think. So just to give everybody a refresher, in case you all don't have the current rates memorized. Our water and sewer rate schedule consists of a fixed charge for each water and sewer that varies by meter size. And this is a pretty typical, and you know, we updated that last time and it's consistent with industry standards. And then there's a volume rate per thousand gallons used for water and for sewer, there's a different rate. And so customer pays a fixed charge to recognize their meter reading billing and collection, cost of having a meter, and then a little bit of what we call readiness to serve, which is even if they have no usage in a month, we've built the system and it's available for their usage. So that's what kind of justifies having that fixed charge. And then we have the variable charge which recognizes the more they use, the more they should pay. So financial plan assumptions, you know, one thing I mentioned, one of the key inputs here is how much demand are we going to have? We know how many customers we have now, but of course, Smithville is a growing community. So working with city staff, we identified, you know, between 2023 and 2025, basically in the short term, we do believe that there's going to be about 350 new accounts. But then we didn't want to be overly aggressive, you know, because if we, if we're overly aggressive in how much we forecast, we're going to end up not having rates high enough to recover the costs. So beyond that, we've assumed 25 new accounts per year. If things go better than expected, we can reexamine, the city can reexamine that and maybe dial back the increases, but that doesn't have a huge impact. One important thing to note is that we forecast that account usage will decrease by about one and a half percent per year. And this is consistent with what we've seen historically, both here and in other communities. And what this represents is a typical household over the past 10 to 20 years has been using less and less water than they have in the past. There's several factors to this. One is every time you install a new appliance, every time you install a new fixture and every new home that's built, we'll use less water than an old one because they're just simply more efficient. There's also a general ethos of conservation that's more ingrained into people, you know, as I've always told people. I was watching a show on PBS with my kids one time and they told them, hey, when you're brushing your teeth, make sure to turn off the water while you're brushing your teeth and, and things like that. So there's, you know, what I would say is an ethos of conservation that's more ingrained in people. And then finally, of course, there is the cost has been increasing in the past and will continue to increase in the future. And it has the water and sewer bills have become more significant and that does have an impact. The other thing we've incorporated this time is what we call, you know, it's basic economic concept, which is called elasticity of demand, which is that if we increase rates, you know, significantly, then there will be an impact on usage. You know, it's supply versus demand. If we raise the price, people will be even more careful than they already are. So based on research, there, there's published numbers for what research suggests and we've incorporated elasticity of demand into the forecast. Finally, one of the challenges we're facing on the cost side, of course, that everybody's well aware of is inflation. We're trying to keep it relatively modest. We're not saying that these increases are driven by inflation, but they are recognized in here. We have benefits increasing by eight percent a year, which quite frankly, even before current times is what we've been using because that's one area that communities have typically seen large increases on is health insurance and other benefits for employees. But then our general inflation is 5% for the next, for 24 and 25, because we're using your 23 budget. So your 23 budget already reflects inflation then in terms of what we're looking at in the, you know, slightly midterm, let's call it about 5%, then down to more general 3% increases, which is more typical with what we've seen over the past, recent past, before the past year, when inflation has certainly kicked up. Finally, we're recommending a reserve target of 25% of O and M in debt service. And this is somewhat consistent with what I understand is your new general fund policy. And it's, it's a pretty typical number for what we recommend as a minimum for water and sewer utilities. Some utilities like to keep a little more in the bank. But typically we wouldn't recommend much less than this, just to make sure that we have enough in case of a, if we have a cool wet summer, for example, and our water sales go down significantly, this gives us a little bit of cushion so that we're not struggling to be able to meet our obligations. So probably the most significant aspect of the rate study this time is the capital improvement plan. When we look at the water treatment plant, there's a million dollars in improvements in 23, the year coming up. And then in 28, we're forecasting, we're going to need to spend $16 million to provide capacity expansion to support growth within the city. Distribution system, these are smaller, there's some miscellaneous projects identified through 24, working with city staff. And then approximately a million and a half dollars a year, just for, you know, to keep the, the investment in the system where it should be. You know, the distribution system is something that should be reinvested because it's just something that you don't want to get behind the curve on. In terms of capital improvement for the wastewater side, similarly, we need an expansion at the wastewater plant to support growth within the city. So there's a $6.9 million expansion for basically planned for 2026 right now. And then on the collection system, it's a little different. We do need some fairly significant projects on the sewer side to be able to serve certain areas of the city. So there's a $4.2 million project at 144th Street and West Bypass Lift Station, a $5.3 million gravity line for Owens Branch. And then beyond that, there's about $500,000 a year just for more minor projects and reinvestment in the collection system. So overall, when we look at the financial plan and the impacts of this, of the growth that we forecast as well as the capital improvements that we need, we're looking at some, you know, pretty significant increases. So for water rates and working with city staff, we've, we've adjusted the timing of some of the capital projects to be a little more realistic and make sure that we're not building sooner than needed. Of course, some of this is subject to change, but based on current plans, it's, it would work out the way we've talked in terms of timing of the improvements to the water and wastewater treatment plants, which is driving much of this. We're looking at an eight and a half percent increase each year for water. And then for sewer, we need larger increase. Again, this is somewhat driven by those needs, not only to improve the plant, but also the collection system. We need approximately 15% increases for 2023 through 2028, and then they would decrease in the future years beyond that. Basically, these increases are necessary to get funds up because we're planning on issuing bonds for most of these large projects. And one thing I want to point out here, you know, this is a discussion we had with city staff was when we're looking at projects like this, these large collection system projects on the sewer side and these treatment plant projects, it's important to recognize that bonding these projects actually makes a lot of sense because it promotes what we call intergenerational equity, which is we're building these improvements at the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And the capacity will be there for the next five, 10, 15 years. And so there's customers who haven't even come to Smithville yet, and they will get the benefit of those improvements that we're having to buy now, but they're not here yet. So by bonding for them, we're pushing those payments out to the years when they will actually be here. So even though the, the pain is that our current customers have to support it for some period of time until they get here. By bonding them, we are pushing some of the costs of those improvements out to when those customers will be here, when that growth occurs into the future. So the bonds, you know, help spread the cost out to when the benefit of those projects will actually be received into the customers who are here. As I sometimes say with some of these projects, I mean, these projects will last for 20, 30 years. There's people who haven't even been born yet, who will benefit from these projects. And by using bonds, we're able to have those projects paid for when they are actually here. So overall, we're looking at total bond issues of approximately $34 million to pay for those capital improvements, which is a total debt service of $2.7 million by 2029. So this is really what's driving those rate increases. So overall, this better illustrates kind of what our cash flow from the combined water and sewer utility looks like. You can see that right now, the light blue line is the revenue at the current rate. So if we didn't change our current rates, that's what our revenue would be. And obviously it wouldn't work in the long term. And the dark blue line represents what the, what the revenue will be under the proposed rates. And so these bars are kind of stacked in order. The bottom, the bottom, the dark blue part is operation maintenance expense. That's what our employees, electricity, chemicals, everything else cost. The light gray that's next up is the existing debt service money we've already borrowed and we've promised to repay. And then the light green is proposed debt service. That's that future debt service that we're talking about that to pay for these plan improvements as well as collection system improvements. And then the purple one on the top is what we call rate funded capital, how much we're going to pay for with cash generated by the utilities. And so you can see that the proposed rate increase is basically some years, it's a little above below, but basically that's what we need to meet the revenue requirements of the utility with the capital improvements and increases in operation maintenance costs that are expected. And it's also important to note, overall, these rates are approximately a 12% annual increase in, when you look at the combined water and sewer bill. So eight and a half percent on water, 15% on sewer. When you average it together, it basically comes out to a 12% increase. And like I said, we did incorporate elasticity of demand, which quite frankly, we don't always do when we do water and sewer studies. Because the, the thing about water and sewer is it's an essential service. And so what research finds is while there is elasticity with larger increases, when you have smaller increases, a lot of times there won't be a reaction. If you raise somebody's bills by 5%, they're not really going to cut back usage. But when you get to these higher increases that we're proposing, and that's why we factored elasticity in this time. And so that it's something we've taken into account. Maybe it won't be as bad as we think it is, but it's certainly something that's reflected in us, you know, so we have to kind of offset that too with the rate increases. But we think it's realistic in this case when we get up to the rate increases we're looking at. And then the other piece, you know, we just want to point out is this is not, you know, it's not like we're building up some huge pot of money here. This is when you look at our operating reserve, which as we said, is our target now is going to be 25% of O and M in debt service. And basically we picked that O and M in debt service because those are the bills we have to pay every month, just like everybody else. So we want to have a little bit of money in the bank to make sure in case of unexpected decreases in usage that we're still able to meet our obligations. So it fluctuates a little over time, but it's pretty much right, you know, there near the target of where we want it to be. So of course, the real question everybody asks is, well, how does this compare to our neighbors? And you can see right now, Smithville compared to a lot of other communities in the Northland, we're pretty much in the middle. We're still a fair bit lower than Kansas City. But you know, higher than some other similar suburban communities in the region. And with the increase, of course, we'll move up that, but we'll still not be, you know, excessive compared to our neighboring communities that we would typically compare ourselves to. And of course, a lot of these communities will continue to raise rates every year, just like we, we do. So in terms of customer impacts, we've got a few example customers here. The ones at the, the top three are kind of, you know, residential users, three being a relatively low volume user. 3,000 gallons a month, 5,000 gallons a month, you know, that's kind of an average user. I'd say 10,000 gallons a month is a little larger residential user and the impacts of that. So if we look at the 5,000 gallons a month, it's approximately a $7 increase in their, or excuse me, $12 increase in their bill each month, 12%. And the bill's approximately $102 right now. So it's approximately a $12 increase per month in their bill. Larger commercial users will face similar increases. Now, it's important to point out that one thing, we are assuming that we're, that we're going to implement this as an across the board rate increase. But that is something that there is some discretion on with the city. When we did the rate study last time for five years ago, we actually increased the volume rate a little more and increased the fixed rate a little less. And the impact that has is that those with higher usage bore a little bit more of the increase than those with lower volumes of usage. But overall, you can see at the bottom that again, it's approximately a 12% increase each year. 11.7% first year, it increases a little more because of compounding later years. And overall, it's approximately a 75% increase over the next five years. And this is kind of a detailed schedule of the, of the proposed rates. And like I said, right now, our proposal is just to do it across the board increase, but that's certainly something that, you know, based on the Board of Aldermen's discretion could be adjusted to still achieve the same level of revenue if, if we wanted to adjust that. So that's kind of the, the piece on the water and sewer rates and charge, and we're going to talk about impact fees next. Is there any questions on that portion before I move on? Okay. So impact fees are charges to, when somebody builds a new property in the city, we charge them to connect to the water and sewer system. And this is a, a common, but not universal funding method that utilities use. There are still quite a few utilities that don't have impact fees. But what it's meant to represent is when somebody builds a new house in the city of Smithville right now, obviously we've built a water plant, we've built a sewer plant, and we've built all the other facilities of a water and sewer system to allow them to connect to the system. They exist and there's equity in that system. And basically an impact fee puts them on equal equity footing with our existing customers. Basically, it's them buying their fair share of the utility that all our other customers have financed over the past decades and paid for over the past decades. And when you pay the impact fee, you're then on an equal equity footing with all the existing customers. And then moving forward, you'll pay the same rates as the existing customers. And so this is basically, it promotes equity among new versus existing customers. And so the existing fees are for a one inch meter, which is our, you know, residential meter or a small business meter. Existing fees are 2,400 for water and 2,800 for sewer. And so we took a look at these fees and we found that the sewer fees were equitably recovering the value of the system in, in using the, and looking at what it was going to cost to buy, build the new plant. Because to value the system this time, we are building a new water plant and we're building, not a new, but we're building an expansion for the water plant and an expansion for the sewer plant. So that actually gives us a really good idea, what's the value of our existing capacity to treat water and sewer? Well, it's based on what, what it will cost us to build a new plant to, to add to that capacity. And so when we looked at sewer, the sewer fee was where it needed to be, but we found that the water fee, you know, we can justify raising the water fee to $3,100 from the current $2,400. Now, it's important to note, anytime we do impact fees, really what we're calculating is the maximum amount that we can justify utility charging, because sometime there's other considerations. We don't want to be out of line with the other communities that we're competing with to attract growth. And so that is an important thing to keep in mind is these are a little different than the rates. The rates are calculated based on the revenue requirement, what we know we need. These, there is some discretion in that we don't necessarily have to raise them to the amount we calculate, but certainly in this case, we're recommending that we do increase the water fee, but that's still up to the discretion of the Board of Aldermen. The other piece that we're proposing to be changed actually is how the fee is assessed to larger meters. As you can see under the current structure, when you go from one to two inch, the fee is doubled, two to three inch, it increases. Again, it's actually tripled from a one inch, the four inches quadrupled from a one inch and the six inches, six times a one inch. This is not a typical way of assessing these fees because what the, it's appropriate for the fee to increase by the size of the meter because that's the potential demand that a customer has in our system. However, a two inch meter doesn't have twice the potential demand. It actually has two, three times the potential demand of a one inch meter, because it actually increased by pi R squared. It's good old geometry. It's not just a two inch, a two inch line is not just double the size, double the capacity of a one inch line. It's much larger than that and it's more significant on the larger meters. So we're proposing that actually the larger meters increase even more to recognize their potential demand on the system. And this is consistent with what's typically done by most other utilities is that the, the larger meter should reflect the potential demand on each utility that they can be placed by that meter size. So overall, when we look at the impact fees, you can see right now, we're about in the middle. And here we have less comparison because again, not every community has impact fees. And so this is a comparison of, you know, single family households in where they're at. You can see we're pretty typical with a lot of similar suburban communities. Whereas when we go to the Kansas side, communities on the Kansas side that we may consider ourselves kind of competing with Johnson County, which is Johnson County Wastewater and Water One, which serves, you know, several of the different cities. And then Alatha has their own utilities, but you can see their fees are significantly higher for single family homes. And then they all pretty much have a similar structure in terms of the larger meter size. It's like Liberty actually for their smallest meter is pretty modest, but when you go to a one inch meter like we have, they're actually way above us. But there, we're a little different because not every community installs one inch meters on single family households. There is a little bit of a discrepancy there. A lot still use three quarter inch meters on single family households, but that's somewhat just a policy decision. You're not unusual in using one inch on single family households, but not everybody does that yet. So that's the end of my prepared presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sure.
So we go from 14,400 water by 86,610.
Yep.
How does that compare to the next, next slide technically?
They all have similar structures for those larger meters. And I can tell you Chuck.
How long have we done that part of the plan to code? On those or prices versus?
I am speculating here, but it almost seems like whoever set that up just literally looked at the meter size and said, well, four inch should be four times a one inch, which like I said, just isn't. That's not the way it works, but that's what it appears to me, but it's speculation. And, and so it's been in place since whenever those fees were implemented, which I don't know off the top of my head. But like I said, if you, if we compare to other similar utilities, it's not going to be out of line with them. And very frankly, what I was going to ask Chuck is how many six inch meters do we even have?
Well, yeah, that's what Jack and I were just exchanging some comments as well. Because we've, so much of our growth in, in the past has been on the residential side, we've not had the larger meters.
Like school distance. That's. It's going to be something.
Hospital, it's, it's the bigger users.
The main campus, concession stand has like a four or six, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's going to be unusual. So like even the, the new price chopper probably only had a three inch meter or two inch meter. Two inch meter. So you're not going to significantly, you're not going to scare away growth. And anybody who needs a six inch meter, you're talking about millions and millions of dollars.
Jack, what do we have to put in up at CPC two? And it's a 90,000 square foot building, $32 million.
Yeah.
Using a lot of water.
We don't have the type of use in our community that sometimes those other.
Into some kind of perspective.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Helps with seeing that huge increase in, in cost. I mean, that's my eyes got real big when I read that earlier today. It is, but those are multi-million dollar projects. And you know, it's, you're not talking about a 200, $300,000 single family home or even a half million dollar single family home. You're talking about large commercial projects that are costing millions of dollars. If you need, you know, anything over a one inch meter, there's a good reason for it.
Yes, sir. You, you said on the impact fees, new customers are, are on, it puts them on equal footing with the existing customers for the impact fee.
Yeah.
Can you explain that a little more on how that puts them on, on the equal footing and also the number of $3,100? You said there's some discrepancy. Where did that number come from? As far as the, the percentage raised by 3,100, is there a formula that you came up with to come up to 3,100?
So what I mean by equal footing is the system as it exists today, there's capacity to serve new household. There's capacity to serve new houses, new businesses with the existing treatment plants, distribution system, collection system. There's capacity to serve new houses, new businesses with the existing treatment plants, distribution system, collection system. And there's equity in that system, just like, you know, you have equity in your home. And all that equity has been paid for by the existing customers. So when a new, if somebody builds a house on our system, they are getting the benefit of all that equity. And basically, the impact fees represent what that equity is worth. So it's saying that for sewer, it's twenty-eight hundred, for water, it's thirty-one hundred dollars. Is the value to serve a single family house, you know, based on the assumptions we've used to connect to our system? And so that's the value of the utilities that they're receiving. And so basically, by making this upfront payment, it puts them on an equal equity footing, because then moving forward, of course, they pay the exact same rates as our existing customers. Everybody bears the cost. Once you're a customer, everybody bears the costs equally based on the rate structure. So that's how you got an equal equity footing. So in terms of the proposed increase on the I'm making sure I'm saying this right, it's on the it's on the water side, going from twenty-four hundred to thirty-one hundred. That that is driven by, in the past, the way this fee was determined, most likely, we didn't set the previous fee it was existing. But I can tell you, there's basically two ways to calculate this fee. There's what's called the system buy-in methodology, and then there's the marginal incremental methodology. But I can make it simpler than that. System buy-in is based on all the existing assets and what they actually cost. Marginal incremental is based on what it's going to cost to replace, to build the new capacity. So in the past, we weren't planning on building expansions and didn't have solid, we were, of course, we knew we would have to build them at some point. But now we have pretty good pricing for what the new water treatment plant is going to cost and what the new sewage treatment plant is going to cost. And so we know exactly how much the water treatments cost us and the sewage treatment costs us. So we updated the fees based on what it's actually going to cost us now to build those plants, because that's a good estimate of what the value of the existing capacity is. So basically, we're saying we have the existing capacity, how much is it worth? Well, it's worth how much it's going to cost us to build the new one. And that's why we saw the increase on the water side from twenty-four hundred dollars to thirty-one hundred dollars. It represents the cost to build treatment now as opposed to the cost of what treatment used to cost. Like everything else, treatment plants have gotten more expensive over time.
Okay, so the percentage that you that you get, well, that's, I I still don't understand that. But okay, and you said that some communities have zero impact fees?
Some of them decide that the existing customers will bear the cost of of the of the expansion, not upgrades isn't the right term, because upgrades, they should bear the cost of. But this is always a challenge is that we can't build, we can't build water and sewer assets just in time. We can't, you know, build three hundred gallons of sewage treatment and a thousand gallons per day of water treatment when a new house connects. We've got to build them in much larger increments and have them ready for when new customers come. And ultimately, existing customers always have to bear some of that burden. It's an unfortunate reality that there's that there's really no way to avoid that, because it it requires large projects that can serve lots of customers. And they're not just, they can't just wait till the the, they can't build all the houses and wait for us to finish the the water and sewer system. So that's just an unfortunate aspect of water and sewer financing is that customers always have to bear some of the cost of new growth. We can't put it all on new growth because of those timing issues.
Okay, thank you. You didn't put it on here, but the percentage of increase, I'll figure it out and look at it myself, but the percentage of increase on each on each one.
Well, sewer is going to say the same, oh, on each one, either size.
Yeah.
And obviously, they're much larger on the larger meter sizes, no doubt.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
In your past experience with other communities, have you ever ran a twelve percent increase in bills every year?
We've done larger increases than that in some cases, unfortunately.
Oh, I'm just curious, because right now, twelve percent is a big number. Don't make a difference what the dollar is.
Yes.
Just that word twelve percent seemed pretty scary.
It it is, you know. Kansas City, on the sewer side, they've been running twelve percent annual increases. Water hasn't been quite as much, because they they haven't had to make some of the same investments, you know. You know, Kansas City is kind of in the opposite situation where they have more capacity than they need on the water treatment side. But certainly on the sewer side, if you're familiar with Kansas City, you know, they're having to make a lot of investments to fix sewer overflows, you know, which is an issue where they used to allow you to do something, and then they decided that you weren't allowed to do it anymore, and it cost a lot of money to fix it when they changed their mind.
Yeah, I think when Carney put theirs in place last year or the year before, they were doing twenty percent a year to catch up.
I was kind of echo Alderman Atkins' statement there, that with COLA last year being five point eight percent, we're doubling that on the increases. Definitely something to take that will be pushed back towards us, I'm sure.
No, I under, yeah, it's it's challenging, and we worked hard with city staff, because believe me, some of the earlier iterations we did were more painful. And, you know, it was making sure when, and and part of it is, who knows, things may change. But ultimately, if the growth occurs, then we need these new treatment plant expansions is the challenge. And we need them both at the same time. And it's like, it would be better, you know, if we didn't need them almost the same time. And that's really what's challenging. And and like I said, this is part of that timing issue. We've got to build them in reasonable sized increments, otherwise they get really expensive on a, you know, per house basis. So, you know, it's like we've made estimates of how much we need, and we got to build them. And unfortunately, the existing customers will have to carry that cost. But once those new customers occur, that'll offset some of that. And I would certainly expect in the future that they'll be more modest. It's just getting over this hump of having to pay that two point seven million dollars a year debt service to pay this.
And Tom, if I could jump in also, this morning, we had an example of an aging infrastructure also. Not only do we have to build the new, we've got to maintain our our existing. And we had a number of customers out of service this morning because of a pretty good sized water main break. So we have to to balance both of those. I might also, based on discussion at the retreat and and working with ref tell us, the proposed rate study also includes a discount for seniors. So one other thing to take into consideration, we have looked at that, that mirrors what we've done on the trash side.
I'm sure a lot of this got to be with communication too, as it happens.
Absolutely, and that's why we bring the information to you now. As we develop the budget, these rates won't go into effect until the board would were to approve them. We also are required to have a public hearing on, and I always get this wrong, wastewater rates.
Sure.
Yes, so I always get it the wrong way. And so we will have a public hearing associated with review of these. So those will occur later, after we've had budget discussions. But we wanted to get this ahead of you, so you all have this information and that that it is out there, because we do recognize this is a significant lift to address those needs that we have as a community.
Yep. Well, price of fire hydrants tripled, right Chuck? We got one that's out right over here. So. Yeah, and that's not, I mean, it's a significant increase of, you know, ten grand a fire hydrant, right? So it's a lot of dollars to pay those off.
Well, and you know, one of the things that, you know, I'll often point out when, you know, I'm giving these presentations is, you know, we face a lot of challenges. Like I said, one of the things is, even our existing customers, even if we weren't growing, as I said, their usage is declining one and a half percent a year. And we face the same inflationary pressures as everyone, which in good times is, say, three percent a year. So if you look at one and a half decrease in usage and three percent inflation a year, we got to raise rates four and a half percent just to break even without making these significant capital investments. And of course, we're facing unusual inflationary times now. And, you know, that's reflected in both the O and M side as well as the the estimates for the capital, which, knock on wood, are hopefully accurate, because that's a challenge a lot of people are facing, is that they plan on something costing ten million and the bids come in and they're fifteen million. I was in a call earlier today for Bentonville, Arkansas, and they need a plan expansion. I I couldn't believe the numbers. They need three point six million gallons of treatment capacity for wastewater, and it's going to be eighty-five million dollars. And it's just mind boggling, and their estimate was fifty-five million. I I mean, it's just, it's twenty, I mean, the I I was shocked when we were going over that. So there's a lot of chance, and unfortunately, as I always point out, you know, there's nothing more important communities do than water and sewer service. Without water and sewer, there would be no city. You know, you can't have it. And, you know, COVID times have taught us that more than anything, you know. People think police and fire is the most important thing. It really, you know, water and sewer, or else we'd be in the dark ages.
Sorry, chief. I'll get you a glass of water. Bob just moved up the the ranks a little bit. Any other questions? I think we got the information.
Sorry for the bad news, everybody, but I appreciate your time this evening.
Hey, the price of two by fours went down a little bit yesterday, so. We have that. Schedule of fees, anybody need a quick break? Forty minutes in? No? All right, if you need a break, stop up and go. Mr. Larson. All the technical problems should be solved already, so.
I hope so.
Not Matt can help you again.
Oh, works for me. I love that. That's great.
All right, well, it's a pleasure to present to you tonight, Stephen Larson, Finance Director. We've prepared a presentation for your discussion and feedback on the proposed changes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three schedule of fees. These fees are, unless otherwise stated, approval of these fees and implementation. Approval would occur in October and implementation would be November first, twenty twenty-two, as indicated in your staff report. Just want to give special thanks to Gina Paint in Public Works and Myra Orey in our finance department for involvement in their research and recommendations in these fees. So I want to start off this PowerPoint tonight with some information regarding our proposal of fees in the development department. And as we go through the PowerPoint, we have more subject matter experts on hand, and we can use them for any specific or expert questions that you might have as we go through this. In the development department, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we are proposing the addition of some new plan review fees. These plan review fees would be for both residential and commercial structures. In essence, a plan review for a project is designed to meet three primary goals. To review the structure that's being built, the completeness of the plan, and the constructibility of the project. A process of residential plan review would first involve reviewing plan sheets all the way from the foundation of the structure to the roof for structural load paths. Plan review also includes review of electrical, mechanical, and plumbing items as well as HVAC. All of those have to be in place in the plan and described sufficiently for our building inspectors. The intent of this is to prepare both the builder and the inspectors for the construction of the building and to be prepared for any potential issues. Commercial plan review includes similar principles as a residential plan, but there are many more items involved in commercial. So when we developed these fees for plan review, the first step we did is we looked at the hourly rate of the building inspector. And so when we did that analysis, we determined an hourly rate of fifty dollars per hour would cover the cost that the city has to pay for all the benefits and salaries and everything associated with that. The second factor that went into plan review is the time that it's required for a building inspector to complete plan review. And so you'll see here, as we go through each slide and through the recommended fees, there's going to be times associated with those fees. Here on the first slide, we have a recommendation to have plan review for new structures and additions for residential. It's broken up by different tiers, zero to two thousand square feet, two to four, and four and beyond. Each type of plan takes certain amount amount of time to review. You can see two, two and a half, and three hours is the recommended develops your recommended fee at fifty dollars per hour. As we go through these residential structures, sure this works, we also have alterations in basement finish. We have a proposal for a non-structural, structural change and structural relating to decks. All of those a little bit shorter time than the new additions at fifty dollars, sixty-five, and twenty-five dollars. It's a slide here. When it comes to commercial fees, commercial plan review fees for new construction, we have this broken out by square footage as well. You'll notice first on the right-hand side that it does take significantly more time to review commercial structures, just about what's involved, there's a lot more involved. These structures are also larger in terms of square footage. We have ranges from zero to twenty-five hundred, twenty-five to forty-five, forty-five to ten thousand, and then ten to fifty thousand. And all of those larger structures taking more time. All again, at the rate of fifty dollars an hour is the charge. Then we do have a a couple more categories for very large structures, which are up to a hundred thousand square foot and a hundred thousand and over. And in that case of the largest structure, we would charge by actual hours worked for that project. In addition to those fees, we have specific fees for industrial. Let me get to my slide real quick. For fifty to one hundred thousand, it's going to be, oh, I'm sorry. Backup page, there we go. For zero to a hundred thousand feet on industrial, be a six hundred dollar charge, and then anything that's over a hundred thousand square feet, it would be actual hours worked. And then the last category here on plan review that we're recommending is commercial tenant finish. We have both a non-structural finish at a hundred fifty dollars or three hours, and then a structural finish at two hundred dollars for hours. Before we move on from plan review fees, do you have any questions? And I can, I can poll Jack if you have any specific questions.
Yeah, I still have one question. I mean, I know that some of this is like actual hours worked versus, you know, a standard fee. I mean, what what is there any issue with just having everything be actual hours worked? Because I mean, I'm just curious, is I mean, if all the stuff, you know, a bit shorter, if you know, they really need to spend all that money or whatnot.
I think, do you want to respond to that?
Because I mean, it just seems kind of weird. I mean, it's all, it's all fifty dollars an hour, so I mean, it's like.
Right, and and ultimately, we prefer to know what's going to happen. The builders want to know what's going to happen. These are, at least on the residential side, we've got years of doing it, so we know what it takes. And it's really close to that average. It would cost us more time to have to go calculate it and bill it and change it for, if we were doing it based on, if it took us fifty-seven minutes versus sixty minutes, would we bill it that way, you know? So on the bigger ones, it's actual hours worked, because it really depends on the project. Some of them could be such that, you know, for example, on a commercial plant or in a residential plant, eight, ten, twelve pages that you're reviewing with all the details. In a commercial plan, you know, ninety pages that are the same size with same detail that you have to review. So it takes a lot longer on those. And when you're dealing with some of those really big buildings, it just, you literally have no idea, you can't give a rough estimate. We also based our numbers on the commercial and the higher end residential based upon what we have been paying to IBTS for those services in the past. So it's kind of a easier for everybody to look at an a la carte menu. That was the logic.
May maybe it would be better to put, take the hours off of there and just put that that's the rate. So let's say for non-structural finish, hundred and fifty dollars. And then when you get to the ten thousand plus, but actual hours worked at fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Because then that then it kind of gets sat out of the way with the, like, like Alderman Chevalier said, it gets out of the way by saying, wait a minute, it only took you two hours to do this, right? I was standing right here, whatever it is, right? It gets rid of that mess.
And I would anticipate that that will be the case when you get to this schedule fees. This is purely for your edification, so you understand how we got there and what. Yeah, it'd just be flat fee, fifty dollars for a hundred and fifty for this or whatever. So it's a a la carte menu, they can look and they can know ahead of time, how much is my permit going to be? Well, sixty cents a square foot. $50 for 150 for this or whatever. So it's a a la carte menu. They can look and they can know ahead of time, how much is my permit going to be? Well, 60 cents a square foot plus this.
How do you feel this adds up with the other communities? Kind of that, that seems to be the, the going consistency on things that we're doing. How does this add up to other communities?
We're probably close to the middle, close. Some of them are going to be higher. Several of them are going to be lower. It just kind of depends on where it's at. And keep in mind, this is a plan review fee for a plan. If that plan's used more than once by a builder, we don't charge them reviewing it every single time. It's just for that review.
No, I appreciate that, Jack, that clarification. That was one of my questions was if we get into a subdivision, then they have three homes to choose from. Those plans aren't going to be altered typically. The, the other thing I just, and, and I have two hats here I'm wearing, wearing my alderman hat this evening. Obviously, this is necessary to help our, our city collect fees for time. The other, other hat I wear is obviously in our day-to-day real estate that there, there's likely would be passed along to the, to the, the bill, the builder is going to pass it to the consumer and the consumer is going to pay for it. So, I mean, it just, another, another fee, another thing to think about and, and how housing is, but I understand why we have to do it.
And the last time we looked at doing this was in 2011. And there was no. I'm sorry, last time we looked at doing this was in 2011 and there was no appetite to do anything because of the economy. It had just been tanked forever. So there's no, no consideration.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on here to look at proposed fees in the Parks and Recreation Department. The first fee that Parks and Rec staff have brought to you for your consideration includes some citywide event fees and specifically it would be the proposal to add a new parade fee. There are a number of considerations that go into the parade fee. There's a lot of time that's spent planning and making sure that everything's safe, ready to go. So the parade can be held in the city by both the Parks and Police Department. The parade fee that would be proposed would be $100 fee paid by the organizer and then a $200 deposit for anything that may happen during the event. This fee is comparable with other cities as Parkville, Sellsier Springs charge similar type fees for parade, to hold parades. And as we go through these, if you have any questions, I can have Matt come up here and help explain any details or questions you might have. The next proposed set of fees is for street closures and for events. Parks and Rec staff are proposing to add a couple of different tiers of fees here and I color coded them. One set of fees is in green and the other is in orange so that you could differentiate between the two categories. In our current schedule fees, we already have what I would call a tier one fee for Courtyard Park. So if you'd like to rent just Courtyard Park itself, those fees exist in the schedule fees. What we're proposing here is to add a second and third tier. The second tier being the one shown in green there where we would close the adjacent streets to Courtyard Park. And that would be split into both a public and private event there with the pricing at 125 and 275. And then shown in the orange would be what would be called a tier three fee. Now it include closing the entire downtown portion of the streets around Courtyard Park and then.
Student, real quick, just to clarify that this is per event, not per day, correct?
I believe it's per. Per day.
Per day.
Per day, yes.
Okay, and it's on the, if you were to have, let's say, get Courtyard Park and also close the streets that you have paid both fees or just one, just one fee, okay?
Right, so if you did the highest.
Okay, the highest or the street closure, does matter? Sorry about that. I wanted to clarify that before you move to the next slide there, Stephen.
Yeah, I understood your question. So yeah, so if you're closing any streets, depending on what street you're closing, it will depend on what tier you, you do. So Courtyard Park is included in each of those tiers itself.
Okay.
Just a matter of what street you're closing.
Okay, so they pay the deposit once per event and then the, the other, other is per day, right? Okay, thank you.
Next set of fees that Parks and Rec staff are proposing is to do a fee adjustment for items that are sold out at the campground. Items that can be purchased at the campground include a bag of ice and bundle of firewood. Staff is proposing the increase of both the firewood and the ice, up a couple of dollars each. And that's just in the response to the increase of the price that it takes to acquire these items for sale. It's convenient to purchase these items out at the campground. They can be purchased at other places, but the cost for the city to buy those things has increased. Sure, I didn't skip the page, okay? Next set of fees that Parks and Rec staff is proposing to adjust are the youth recreation fees. You can see here, these fees are charged per child for each league type basketball, baseball, softball, T-ball. And then on the next page, we have soccer, soccer clinic and volleyball. The proposal is to increase these by $20 each. This proposal is to keep up with increased costs and to continue to provide these programs in a good quality manner. And, and essentially keep up with increased costs that these programs are costing the city. Matt and I work together to run all our revenue projections with the number of participants and also look at the budgets and expenditures. And increasing these fees is going to allow these programs to be self-sustaining in the future. Last proposed fee is from the Parks Department is the city facility rental discount. We have the proposal to give out a 50% discount to active employees who work for the city. For those that use a facility, that 50% discount, senior center shelters or green spaces is going to apply during non-peak rental times. And then we would also require the employee to pay a deposit with that. If any questions for Matt or myself before we move on from the parks fees.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a question, but well, I guess it's a question. I was curious what the appetite would be like on things like parade fees if we could waive those fees for school district events. Just to make sure we're, you know, we're working with our partners over there or not.
Yeah, and I think that we could do the same process as we do for waiving fees for special events. I think we can include that and make sure that if the city wants to sponsor something like that, we should waive those fees, just like we do other special events at the courtyard.
But I'm having parade on as an annual one to waive it. We know it's going to always happen.
Yeah, like a championship parade, really any parade to school district. I feel like that should be a service that we offer.
Put that one in policy that Cynthia and I can approve it, doesn't need to go to the board.
That's something that we can actually include in the schedule of fees in that way.
Because something comes up that we don't have a time to have a board meeting.
I'll go ahead and so we'll approve, we'll have the schedule, the final version for consideration later in the budget process. I'll put a specific exception in there that the school would not, that those fees would be waived for their events. Any other comments on, from the board on these Parks and Rec fees before we move on?
Stephen, could you back up once, two, two slides, please? There you go, right there. Okay, I noticed that the, the basketball league is $10 difference. Instead of the 20, I noticed that on a couple of, is there a reason for the difference in, versus some are 10, some are 20?
So the 65 pricing is a little bit different than the other leagues. And if I'm not mistaken, Matt, we're just trying to get everything to be priced similarly and consistent.
Yeah, so when we took over the basketball league in 2019 from like the club that was doing it, they were already at 65. And so by doing this, we'll just now be the same across the board.
Yeah, because at that time, all of our fees were 55 except that one. And the clinics and T-ball are always less because they're shorter.
Correct, less, less staff is needed for those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on parks, move on? Our next set of fees will look at our proposed changes to fees that are in our police department. The first one we'll look at here is the proposed change to our outside employment hourly rate. Right now, the city charges an outside employment rate of $45 per hour. The chief and I sat down and we talked about this rate and just wanted to make sure that this rate was appropriate with increased costs to pay officers, increased costs and benefits, retirement. And so we ran those numbers and did those calculations and found that that rate, especially with all the active sworn police officers that we currently have, is higher than that $45 per hour. So what we're proposing is to increase that rate from 45 to 60. And that would appropriately cover the city's costs for active sworn police officers, the ones that are on our payroll right now. And then the next proposed fee would be our change for our police reports and our police videos. We're proposing, right now, we do not have a charge to acquire those police reports and police videos. Our recommendation is to move that to a $5 charge to recover staff time that it takes. There is an important exception that I've noted in the slide to this $5 charge. The Missouri State statute does require municipalities to provide reports and videos at no cost to alleged offenders who may serve jail time. If the charge with the request for the video and report, if that charge carries a possibility of 15 days or more of being in jail, the defendant will not be charged a fee for obtaining the report or the video. And then also along with that, we'd recommend waiving that fee for victims that are in the report if they need a copy of it, that they wouldn't have to pay it either.
I had a question on that. Is that $5 really enough? That seems to have been. How long does it take to pull a, to pull a report or to pull and email a link to, to a video? Is that a five-minute job or is that a 20-minute job?
Chief takeoff?
Yeah, you left right before this.
Be back in a few minutes and so we'll ask the question. He's, he is at a staff meeting right now. So, well, if we can table that till he comes back, he can better answer that than Stephen.
I have another question too. We will need to ask the chief, is it, is there any exception to this as far as if there's something on the video that we not want to be public? Or you know what I mean, to wherever the video goes, once it's released to whoever it is.
And there, and we'll let chief speak to that, but there are requirements of what is and what is not public and, and they're very well-versed in, in that, those records requirements. And if not, they're, they will consult with, with our legal staff, but we'll have chief address that.
Okay, I will come back to that when Chief Lockridge comes back. Okay, and then here the final portion of the presentation, we're going to look at the proposed schedule fees for our Public Works Department. This is going to include a review of the trash rates, the street excavation fee, which is a new fee that we'll propose, and then our utility rates, which we just covered with Raffatellus. We'll look at our exact proposed rates for next year. So let's start that with a look at our sanitation fees. As you know, the city contracts with GFL, Green for Life, to provide trash services to residents. And we signed a contract with GFL last year, November of 2021. That contract's going to terminate on October 31st, 2026. Unless they get notice of termination, we'll renew that agreement annually. When we worked with GFL through negotiations on this contract and these rate increases, the, the final number that we proceed back is to have a proposed increase of 5%. And of course, just like Tom mentioned, GFL also has their own inflationary costs that they are having to prepare for and budget for in their company. They have a specific CPI that they look at for all their costs, fuel, labor, things that are specific to the sanitation market. So with that 5% increase, that would take you from a monthly trash charge of 1837 per month up to 1929. Within that negotiation, we also continue to provide the senior discount, which is 15% off the regular price. We're taking that charge from 1562 to 1640 per month.
Stephen, just a question for the board. I know that we vote for annual, right, on every year. Would there be an opportunity with the, the with looking ahead that the, these prices are going to increase to negotiate a longer term contract than a year to save money in the future? Would, is there a possibility for the board for us to negotiate? For example, this trash contract for like a three, five-year contract at a, at a set rate of maybe 5% increase a year, so.
The existing contract is a three-year contract that includes that escalation and review on an annual basis. And that's typically what you will run into for the very reason we're looking at costs of fuel and staffing increase for them. And so while it would be preferred for us, I, I chucked out, we could get something that would be a locked rate.
Okay.
And that we, the prior contracts have been similar to this. They've been a longer-term contract with annual adjustments based on the CPI.
So, so this one is a three-year with, and this is year two or?
Three year, correct, it's not five, it's three year, three year, and this is the second year.
Okay, and each year they negotiate the contract? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on these sanitation fees before I move on?
Just clarification, it's the fifth year with the caller, this is our second.
Okay, the next set of proposed fees from the Public Works Department would be a new fee, calling in an excavation fee. Public Works staff is proposing, proposing this excavation fee for, for those entities and, and franchise owners that make cuts in the city's street, curb and sidewalk infrastructure. Right now, Smithville does not have a fee for any street sidewalk or curb cuts. When, when the vendor, the owner comes to work in the right of way, there is a $25 right-of-way fee that is charged and then a $25 inspection fee that is charged. When staff looked at this excavation fee, they did some research on other communities. And a lot of comparable communities have an excavation fee and that research is presented in the staff report. The excavation is defined as any work that's done on, in the surface or subsurface of the public right-of-way. As we know, streets degrade over time and when vendors and right-of-way owners make cuts in that street, it, it can speed up that degradation. What this fee can do with the additional revenue, it can help offset expenses on street and sidewalk maintenance. This additional revenue would allow for expansion of our mill and overlay program, provide additional revenue for pothole repairs and crack ceiling and sidewalk improvements. So when Public Works, we, we worked with them and understand what we wanted to have in this fee. And up here, we have a couple of different fee types that we're going to propose. The one in the top row is a one-time right-of-way excavation permit. So this is someone who's not working in it routinely, just doing it one time. You would pay a permit fee of $20 plus a calculated cost based upon the type of cut you're making in the street, curb and sidewalk in terms of the square footage. On the second row, we have another proposed excavation fee, which would be an annual permit. This would be for franchisees of facilities that are working within the right-of-way. This permit would be a 250. This permit would be a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit for the year and then plus their cost for making the cut. We would also propose, I put a star there at the bottom, when we get to the next slide, it'll make some more sense, but anyone who's working in that right-of-way and making a street cut, if they're making a lot of little holes, we wanna at least propose that they pay a minimum of twenty dollars. Those little holes that they cut into the street can really add up over time and, and hurt the street if, if there's no money to be recouped. So let's look at an example of what that would look like in terms of the cost. So this, before you use a typical franchisee excavation costing example, and it's, it's an example for the franchisee that's paying the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual fee. So in this case, they pay the fee, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they make a forty-five-square-foot cut in the street, which would be a, a nine-hundred-dollar fee. A curb cut of five linear feet would be seventy-five dollars, and in this case, there's no sidewalk cut. You can see the cost per square foot at twenty, fifteen and ten dollars for street, curb and sidewalk. So in this case, the, the total fee is gonna be nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars plus the annual permit that was paid for a grand total of twelve twenty-five.
Stephen, the annual permit fee, that's paid and you have it for a year from the day it was purchased to make additional cuts, right, in the, in the sidewalk or from the data purchase, or is it annual from November first, so it's from data purchase?
Yeah, once the permit is purchased, from there on, they would have that ability to make those cuts, but they, that's when you start paying for all the cuts into the curb.
Okay, so if they make a cut today, buy the permit, make a cut today, and then six months they make another one, they need to contact the city and say, here's what we're doing, we already paid the permit fee, but here's, here's the other fees, right? Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to mention too, in the staff report that correct me if I'm wrong, but we modeled this after Platt City's excavation fee. So when you go through that research, you'll see that the way they structure their excavation fee, the way we structured ours, they're gonna be pretty close to each other. So that's where some of the inspiration came from, the fee. Any other questions on that before we move on?
Stephen, why don't we circle back to the questions about police? That'll work.
Chief, we had a couple of questions about the I wanna take it back to the slide here so we can look at it. We had a couple of questions on if this was an appropriate charge for the time it takes to pull a reporter.
That's it? Boils down to that? Yeah, actually it is. And for the videos, it's probably, we're probably undercutting ourselves.
That was, I think, Alderman Yudal's question.
Yeah, yeah, the videos probably take a little longer, but this is also not burning a disc video or anything like that. We've gone every, we've transitioned everything to what our vendor calls cloud share, which is an email system that sends out a link, you download it at your, your convenience.
How long does it take if a customer comes in the front door and says, I need video to this traffic stop? How long does it take him to get that information processed?
On an average video, it's probably going to take anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes, depending on their request and what's involved. If it's a simple traffic stop that involves, true, very true. But let's say in a utopian world, there's a simple traffic stop and somebody wants to see how their sixteen-year-old son reacted when he was stopped for speeding, cuz we all know that would never happen. We're talking a car video and, and one-body video. So that can move along fairly quickly. We can send you an email and you can get all that. If we're talking a DWI stop where one or two officers backed him up, well, that compounds a lot of things, cuz now we've got video for each single car. We've got a video for every officer that was present, and then if there's video back down here in the interview room, there's that as well. So this takes into account of kind of averaging that whole thing out through a year and coming to just a nice, simple figure to try to make it as simple as possible.
It seemed, the video fee especially seems like report fee, I'm surprised we didn't charge one in the past. It seems like the reports are probably easier to at least pull and redact any information you have to redact, but.
Yeah, the redaction, the redaction piece is what takes, takes up some time for a clerk to read through the whole report, redact what needs to be redacted.
I'd recommend these, both of these fees be adjusted to, to at least double on the report fee, but the video fee, I think, should be higher. I think you're dealing with, with a lot of lost time. I'm not necessarily saying it needs to be built out per hour or the hourly charge of the people involved in making the, the video, but it needs to at least be half of, of the time it takes on average to do that.
We can run that by John, see how he feels. Now, what I do need y'all to keep in mind is there's a state statute that passed last, last year or the year before. There are certain situations where we can't charge fees.
Right, and that's been, yeah, beginning of time, yeah, since the beginning of video. And ninety, so two thousand.
And we kind of made adjustments a, a year or so ago regarding that new statute. And we probably took it a little too far to one side, and this is kind of, kind of correcting that and trying to bring the pendulum back to the middle. Charging what should be charged, but not charging when it shouldn't be charged. So trying to just balance the whole thing out. But, but we can talk with, with John, make sure he's, he's on board and good with, with where those would fall.
Chief, I, I concur with Alderman Yudal on that. So, yeah, definitely.
Don't sell yourself short, come on.
All right. We'll, we'll reevaluate it. We'll ensure that we get it where it should be.
And Chief Alderman Russell had another question. I don't know if we answered it sufficiently earlier or not.
It was just involving, I think we, we definitely touched on it, but it, it was just involving when a video is requested, if there's some, the protections around making sure it's not, for our protection, not on the internet, right? Not put where it shouldn't be, where we don't want it to be, right?
Once we, once we release that, we have no control over that. We have no control once.
But there are protections on.
And it all centers around expectation privacy. A video inside a home, video in a medical facility, you know, something that's not in view of general public can't be released unless it's to somebody that's involved or their legal counsel. Or their estate, if that person has passed away. Now, a video in public view, say it's a video in the Price Chopper parking lot, that's free game. That is, that is open, that is an open record by state statute, and we, we have to release those. And once we release them, we have no control over where they go.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Something you just, you just said that, I, I just wanted to follow up on. You know, you said if there was like a more in-depth, like, traffic stop where you had multiple officers involved in multiple videos, does that mean each one of those is gonna be charged per camera? You're gonna have to charge that, or is it still just gonna be under that same flat fee?
We were just trying to, we were trying to come out with a flat fee across the board, averaging everything out through a month or a year. We were trying to make it as simple as possible.
Okay, so yeah.
Both for the folks walking in the front door and for our folks. So, okay, we'll reevaluate it. That's easy. Anything else? Thank you.
Hey, we'll jump back ahead to the public works fees. And the next proposed fee that we have are reconnection charges specifically for snowbirds who move away from the city, typically to a warmer area in the southern United States over the winter time. Right now, when a snowbird completes a form and requests to have the services turned off, we do not charge a fee. We also do not charge a fee when they come back to the city and request to the, have those services turned back on. And in talking with Chuck and our other utility staff, we're bringing forth the recommendation to apply the fifty-dollar reconnection charge to their account when they come back and have that service turned back on. Right now, we also charge that fifty dollars as the disconnection fee, which is, which is really fifty dollars to get the service turned back on if you're disconnected for non-payment. So this fifty dollars that we're proposing would be really to cover the same staff and labor costs that it takes to reconnect service. The next group of proposed changes are our utility rates, and specifically this slide will look at our water rates. What we're, what I'm showing you here on the first row is the monthly water fixed charge. You all just heard from Raffatellus, the consultant, about what the proposed increases would be in water and wastewater. And now we're just looking at, at those increases for the fixed charge and the volume rates here. In the first row, right now, we do charge eleven seventy-seven a month for the fixed charge. An eight-and-a-half percent rate increase is staff's recommendation, and that it came from that Raffatellus utility rate study. That would move that fixed charge from eleven seventy-seven a month to twelve seventy-eight a month. So it's about an increase of a dollar a month on the fixed charge. On the monthly water volume charge, right now, charge eight thirty-three per thousand gallons, that would move to nine oh four. On the wholesale rate, which we sell water at that rate to public water sewer district number eight, that would be at four ninety-eight per thousand gallons, that rate would move up to five forty-one per thousand gallons. And we move on and look at the wastewater rates. From the Raffatellus study, we're proposing an increase of fifteen percent to wastewater. On the fixed charge there in the first row, that would take our current charge from sixteen oh two a month to eighteen forty-three. And then on the volume charge, it would be six sixty-eight per thousand gallons up to seven sixty-nine per thousand gallons. I'll show you an average bill here in a couple of slides. Before we go to that average bill, just wanna cover one more proposal in terms of the fixed charge. Coming out of the retreat, we had interest from the board in providing seniors with a rate relief. And so this slide represents the creation of a fixed charge for seniors for both water and wastewater. Right now, we don't offer that senior rate, and the proposal would be to offer that rate at the current fixed charge. So we just saw our current fixed charge for water is eleven seventy-seven a month and sixteen oh two for wastewater. For seniors ages sixty-five and older, they could elect for those rates, and that essentially wouldn't see an increase in their fixed charge. They would just see the increase in the volume charge.
Would that be worded as a fifteen percent discount after after this, after that goes into effect, after the fifteen percent rate increase, they're staying at the same fifteen percent discount?
It, it could be worded as that. It, it not necessarily wasn't worded as a fifteen percent discount, but as keeping the fixed charge the same. It kind of hit upon the same spirit as what Tom was talking about with volume and fixed. We wanted to keep the fixed charges low so that, and I mean typically seniors can be lower users of.
What happens next year? And it's a fifty.
We'd have to review that.
Is it discounted rate now, it would be? It would continue, continue on unless we needed to, to change those, that discounted rate.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's why we have it at this rate now, so that we can review that on an annual basis and not to depict it as a fifteen percent discount because that volumetric amount would, would cause that to fluctuate among customers. So it would be a discount to the base rate. I think this year, we could market it as no increase to the base rate.
Well, they're not, in, in this scenario, they're not paying the per gallon rate, so the discounts only, yeah.
We did run a financial analysis on this as well and talked to Raffatellus about it, and in the staff report, we have some information about that. We have about four hundred customers signed up for the senior discount, so the revenue effect of putting the fixed charge in is, is pretty nominal. We looked at those numbers in the staff report.
Sure you ran the scenario, but what happens if they have a leak? There's no leak adjustment? We just shut, you know, shut them off and eat the water costs?
Well, so with a, I mean, with the leak adjustment.
Cuz usually, you know, if they have a leak, then we're just gonna eat the cost on this one, right? There's no adjustment because there's no volume to charge them on.
No, they still, they'll still pay the volumetric charge, yeah, at the, at the rate, so, and that's.
In order to be eligible for a leak adjustment, you have to have twice, more than twice your monthly average. And so, I mean, even if they had pretty, if they typically have pretty low usage, if they have a leak, I don't think the leak adjustment's gonna vary a whole lot from other types of leak adjustments you prove. Let's look at the average monthly bill with this increase. So this chart is showing you the average monthly bill, trash included, year-over-year when we've implemented rate increases. You can see going back to November twenty seventeen, the average bill is about eighty-two, eighty-three dollars a month. With those rate increases and changes in rates, we've seen that bill grow. The largest increase you can see has really been in the wastewater volumetric rate, that's gone from twelve to thirty. And then we've seen less impact in the fixed charges, especially in water. And then just recently in wastewater, we've had some increases in that. So we've kept the fixed charges a little bit lower over time, and then the increases have really occurred in the volume. When you look from November twenty-one to twenty-two, it's an increase of about twelve dollars, about eleven and a half dollars. With Raffatellus mentioned that in the utility rate study. Move on and talk about the water impact fees, which were covered in the utility rate study presentation. Taking the numbers that Raffatellus provided us, gave you some examples of the meter sizes and what they would go for in terms of a commercial category. Looking to increase those water impact fees, seven hundred dollars on the three-quarter inch, and then scaling them up from there as the meters get larger. And there at the bottom of the slide are some examples of some different businesses that would be in the two and three-inch meter category, which is one of the more common ones for commercial. On the wastewater side, we're proposing no change on the current three-quarter or one-inch meter. That then, from the presentation, you saw it's a fifty-nine-hundred-dollar charge for a new lot with the water and wastewater impact fee combined. On the larger meters, you're gonna see that scaled increase, and you can see there on the most common, the two and three-inch, an increase of a few thousand dollars for the two-inch and then a little more than double on the three-inch. And then our final fee of the night for Public Works and of this presentation is staff's proposal to expand how the North Force Main impact fee is assessed. Right now, we have a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-dollar impact fee that's located in the developer agreement only for specifically Greyhawk and Rollins Landing. The neighbor, the homes that are in those neighborhoods that are gonna be developed are gonna be paying a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-dollar impact fee in addition to the twenty-eight-hundred-dollar wastewater impact fee. What staff is proposing is to expand that properties and lots that are connecting in the North Force Main beyond Greyhawk and Rollins also pay that impact fee. The, the original idea was that revenues from that impact fee would pay for the construction of the Force Main. And so as we continue to have lots connect to that line, they would continue to pay that fee. Right now, because it's in the developer agreement, it just limits the fee to those neighborhoods, and they're just about built out, not mistaken, so.
Stephen, I had one question, and this is maybe for Jack or Chuck. I've had some constituents that have asked about ag meters. Do we do any ag meters in the city of Smithville? Correct.
Good, well.
Yeah, Stephen, I have a couple of questions for you on the on the disconnection fee or the connection fee, is it only a connection fee, not a disconnection fee, or is it both?
On the, for the snowbird or just a general question?
The snowbird.
It would be, it would, the, so the way we would have it in our proposed schedule fees is it would be fifty dollars upon reconnection of the service. Okay, and, and when people are, when someone's disconnected for non-payment, the fifty dollars is really paid as a reconnection charge. Once the service is, is reconnected, they're paying that fifty dollars in addition to everything that they owe on the utility bill to have the service reconnected.
So it, it would be cheaper instead of doing that, just to pay the, what was it, eight dollars a month minimum fee that was in the last presentation, was gonna be charged per month with zero water usage, right? That, your trash should be on there too, so it would be, it would be more expensive with the, with the whole bill, okay? So when you disconnect here, it it shuts off trash too, right? For Snowbird?
Correct, yeah, so the the trash service is not provided to them.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then on the on the graph that you made, just a question. I noticed at the bottom, the the months weren't, there were different months at the bottom. Is there a reason why they weren't like all November? For your for your graph, is there a reason why they weren't all the all the same month?
Yes, on the utility bill? Yeah, let me go to that real quick.
Why they weren't all like all November?
Oh. That's correct, yeah, yeah, those are the day, those are the dates and months in which the rate increases were implemented. So there's a couple of months in there that are, I think, May. And so there was a couple of years in which the rates were implemented in May. Those are the times in which those rates took effect.
Okay, thank you. And since I, since you're the numbers guy here, do you, all these, all the presentation, do you have a total cost on what we would, what we would recoup? What to say this, what the whole presentation would impact would mean to the city? Money wise, dollar wise, that we would collect? No?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, just what, what is it equal to? I mean, I know wouldn't be accurate, but you will good, be a good guest of it.
We don't have that information. And some of that would be significant guests on, you know, based on average number of police reports a year and things that, no, we don't have that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, are your reports that we're talking about on this, is that a paper report or is that a emailed report?
Okay.
Yes, from the gift would be they probably average fifty fifty. Preferred by the person making the request.
Right, yeah, I just.
A lot of the attorney's office now prefer email. Because it's not the attorney who's making the request, it's it's their their staff and. Of course, if I try to email it to an attorney, they're not going to get it. I email it to the staff, they know what to do with it, they can. So it's it it, my guestimate is probably fifty fifty.
Any other questions on the board on on this proposed fee presentation? Gina, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gina Tate, management analyst in Public Works. All right, and tonight we're going to be talking about the sidewalk improvement program. And this is follow up from the board retreat. Okay, so currently, this is managed by the development department and the Public Works Street Division. And so right now, we have a budget of twenty five thousand dollars. And property owners have the opportunity to get their sidewalk inspected to see if it needs to be replaced due to hazardous conditions. And then this is a cost share where they pay for the materials and supplies, and the city provides the labor. Oh, thanks. And right now, this kind of results in a fifty fifty cost share with how this is broken out. And so since twenty fourteen, we've had seventy two property owners in this program. And right now, as outlined in the memo, we have fifteen outstanding work orders, which these would be completed before changing anything to the program. So why are there outstanding applications? Staff capacity is a big deal. We have a small crew and we're actually down to right now also. And then also the sidewalk repairs aren't in the same area. So with concrete, that can create some issues. We're just trying to get things done. It's hard to do one sidewalk up north and do one down south. So how can we improve this? We can use a contractor to perform labor and provide the materials. I mean, they would continue to have this cost share with the property owners, and that would be a fifty fifty split. And using GIS, we're going to use our inspectors to kind of do a PCI version of the sidewalks and go throughout and see where hazardous conditions are throughout the city and identify any small gaps in the sidewalks for connectivity. And then I also wanted to note that there are projects outlined outside of this program to address more large scale needs. And this is also identified in the transportation master plan. The Second Creek Bridge, Highway one sixty nine sidewalks, I did want to note that does go to Wright Valley Road. So it's not just to the bridge, it goes all the way. And we've applied for the Diamond Crest Multi Use Trail with DNR. And then we have multiple planned projects in the capital improvement plan. So what we're looking from for the board is priority areas that we heard at the board retreat. We're to public destinations and services, safe routes to school, and then to city amenities. We just want to know if we're missing any of the priority areas from you all. And then budget, you know, we currently only have twenty five thousand dollars. And that's going to get us a limited amount of improvement, especially with today's cost. So if you want to add anything that was brought up with the fund balance savings and expanding the sidewalk program. And then ultimately, this would change the program right now. You know, if our codes enforcement officer goes out and sees a broken sidewalk, that person can get recommended to this program and we go take a look. So instead of being that kind of program, this would be more of us having a master list of all of the hazards in the city and kind of focusing on the areas that need the most improvement. And obviously, that we brought to the board each year for your feedback. So based on that, we're just looking on your feedback and we can bring more detailed information at a future work session. Yes.
Yeah, I I like the idea of like the PCI for sidewalks. And I definitely think that would drive, you know, where we need to be on funding, if we need to increase to make sure, at least make sure we get those critical pieces done quickly. And because I mean, the homeowner ultimately, or the property owner ultimately has to, has to do it. If we find it, it's really bad, but this at least helps them out. Give them some break.
I'd like to see some more, I guess, the term would be advertising about the program. Trying to get more people involved to get projects closer to each other, to get projects done quicker. All ideas are good ideas when it comes to. At least from what I always walk is downtown, getting some of the downtown stuff fixed. But I think there's, there's been a huge changeover in population. Houses sold and houses flipped and all this stuff. Most people don't know that this, that that this exists.
Right.
I didn't know this plan exists till probably last year, or a year before that.
Yeah, and that's something we could include in our newsletter that we send out on the utility.
Yeah, newsletters and did you knows and hammering the point home, hey, if you, if your sidewalk is in bad shape, we can help get that in better shape.
And and I think also Gina and Chuck on to the point here, those identification of priority areas. One of the things staff has talked about is, as we identify those areas, then we would anticipate being a little more proactive in reaching out through maybe next door in a targeted neighborhood or something like that. So that we could target those communications to those in the area and make sure that we've got those opportunities.
I talked to somebody that, what's the big road we're redoing water and sidewalks on over here? Yeah, I talked to somebody that lived on Quincy, and they're like, yeah, we'd love to see sidewalks. I said, we're getting sidewalks.
Yeah.
Like, what? So. Right. Right, and I happen to know, I just had just heard about it. And it was fresh in my head that we're redoing that, that area, those roads and those water lines and things like that. And and sidewalks are going to be put down. And they were impressed, but they were also kind of befuddled that they hadn't heard even a little bit about it. I don't know if they lived there forever or if they were another one of the new residents. It seems like I've got new neighbors moving in every three months. So just making sure that we're really letting our public know that this is one of the things we can work on. And if we can get enough people in areas that the the truck can get to without the concrete hardening in the truck.
Exactly.
We can get more, more stuff done, more accomplished and and show some, some work in this this area. And I'd love to see it be funded higher, but I don't know where that money is going to come from yet.
They just walked in the door. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Bulker.
Along with that communication, I think there's still a lot of people that don't know they're responsible for the streets, I mean, the sidewalks.
Right, right, so just more communication.
I do have a question, I don't know the answer, but so say a homeowner's notify that their sidewalk needs to be repaired and this program exists. Do they have a timeframe to agree to do it? I know that it's a timeline on the project, but do they have a set of time to where they could be eligible for the match? Or like, say, within six months, they don't, then they're no longer eligible and they have to get it fixed, no? But do they have a timeframe once they're notified? That's what I'm asking.
So right now, how it is, is our code enforcement officer would issue them a ticket if they have a hazardous sidewalk. So they have X amount of time to get it resolved. Or we would count it as them enrolling in the program would, you know, kind of X that out. But for our, for this proposed one, it would be, you know, we would need to do this area by this certain date. So yeah, there would be a cutoff, but we would try to communicate with, you know, everyone that would be affected.
When when they get that ticket that they need to repair the sidewalk, is that, are they given that as an option? They do know about that?
Yeah, she does recommend the program to them. So that's why the majority of the program participants we have currently are recommended from our code enforcement officer.
Great, thank you.
So I guess, you know, if if we do this PCI and we go around and identify these neighborhoods, these areas that need to be done. You know, and then we say, okay, well, you know, your sidewalks are messed up, you need to fix them, right? At that point, I mean, that's, that will be in ordinance too. You know, but hey, we're gonna, we'll enroll everyone in this program, you know, that we can. If you do not enroll in that, then I think that's what what you were saying. You know, they should, you know, they're, they should not be able to have that.
Some consequence.
Yes, some consequences, yeah.
And so. Right.
But but I mean, I mean, I'm assuming just ordinance wise, I mean, they would still get deemed for having the bad sidewalk. So that 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 whole process would still happen as as normal. But I mean, I don't want them to come back like, you know, a year later, you know, and they're ducking the process servers or whatever. And then, oh, let's do the sidewalk now, because by then it's too late, we've already done it.
So that's something we need to take into that process, that's a good point.
I also don't want, I also don't want to feel like we're out headhutting your sidewalk, you know?
Yeah, we already have people doing that, so, I mean.
Well, yeah, it is a safety issue and it's.
And most, and most of our sidewalk complaints are, or sidewalk tickets are complaint driven today anyway, right? So they're already doing that. But all that bulletproof, safe routes to school are, for those of you that don't know, our school board president is here. I know it is a priority for the school district not to add sidewalks to the campus and other areas. So there's one funding source. Maple, right, Maple Lane, crosswalk? Yeah, of course.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
So just as a quick follow up, as we progress through the budget process, this will be one of the items that we'll be talking to the board about kind of financial impact and where we want to look at amount of funding to look at that. But wanted to get this in front of you, start thinking through that. And we'll take into consideration all the priorities of the governing body, resources available and how, what we might have and and prioritize those. So when you have that information as we work through. Now, Anna will present information that changes to our employee handbook. We have not updated the handbook for a while, usually in conjunction with budget development, we do take a look at the handbook. Last year, we really didn't make many changes to, I don't think we brought any changes to the governing body in anticipation of the comp and classification study that did have some pretty significant recommendations. So those items that were brought up that were not compensation related during the comp and class study, those are included in here, and Anna's going to take you through the changes, both those related to that study and otherwise, just on cleanup to the handbook.
Thank you again, Anna Mitchell, Assistant City Administrator. Last year, the board approved a contract with McGrath Consulting to complete a classification compensation study. We have now received that executive report. The first part, portion of that, the board has already executed with the job pay ranges that were changed. And then the associated pay increases were given to employees earlier this year. This is the second portion of it, which is the increase of or the expansion of the benefits package that is provided to our employees. The third, which I'll give you an update on that later, is the update to the job descriptions for our current employees as well. On January fourth, we had a work session where McGrath Consulting came in. We talked through several different benefits that we can add to our current employee handbook. And we have added those to our current handbook that we have included in your packet. As well as those, we've done some cleanup to some other language within the employee handbook that I'll also go over as well. The first recommendation from McGrath Consulting was to set a specific time that we're going to have an annual review of those pay ranges that we updated earlier this year. In the handbook, we have now set that time period as, in conjunction with the budget process to then be approved at that point in time. And that can be found in section six, three. The second item is adding two additional floating holidays to paid vacation days for our employees. Currently, employees receive ten paid holidays. Adding two floating holidays will increase the amount of time that employees can take off for any additional holidays that may not be recognized already by the city. Other holidays or birthday or random Thursday in the middle of August. Anything that the employee may want to take those days for. For the floating holidays, it is a use it or lose it policy. They will not be accrued year to year. And it is more of a use those ones first because you're going to lose them first. As far as new employees that come in, if they come in at the beginning of the year, they'll get two of those floating holidays. If they come in at July, July or later, they'll only get one of those holidays as well. The third item that we're going to be proposing to you is increase of vacation accrual rates. Currently, our vacation accrual is fairly competitive for years zero through five of employment with the city. But once you get above those five years of experience, that's when our competitiveness starts to go down. So what is proposed in the new, in the handbook updates for years of employment, five to ten, increase the accrual, annual accrual from one hundred and thirty hours to one hundred and thirty six hours for years ten to fifteen of employment from one hundred and fifty six hours to one hundred and sixty eight hours. And then the final portion that we want to include in this is the creation of a fourth level. That's something that we are also currently lacking is the creation of employees who have been working for us for sixteen plus years. That would have an annual accrual of two hundred hours of vacation. This also impacts the total accrual that each employee is allowed to have overall. Currently, we have a cap, a cap of one and a half years of accrual is the max amount of any employee that they're allowed to accrue at one time. Once they hit that year and a half of accrual, they stop accruing at that time and they lose that, those hours. So once we increase the amount that they can accrue, we increase that cap. And those employees are still keeping that amount of hours that they recruit over time. The fourth item that we are proposing is the addition of mandatory vacation. Over the last couple of years, it's been a little crazy when it comes to taking vacation, especially within departments who are required to be here during times of need. And so mandatory vacation, the purpose behind that is to make sure that our employees have or take the time to go relax, refresh, and then be able to come back to work, ready to work. And they take that time for their own hobbies. And there's a better balance between their work and personal life at that point. This also. This also um, ensures work integrity as well. I know, um, those of you who work in uh, finance world, um, mandatory vacation is um, not a new thing. Um, that ensures that we have those checks and balances on our end as well as an organization. The fifth item is vacation buyback. So this also goes along with that vacation accrual. Over time, we have several of our long-term employees that have hit that max and they can't accrue anymore and they're losing those hours. Uh, so vacation buyback, what we are proposing is up to forty hours of vacation. Uh, any employee can request that um, the city buy back that amount. And that'll be done once per year. Towards the end of the year, policy is uh, request thirty days prior to the end of the calendar year. What we'll do, we'll have a form, we'll have a process, we'll have a a deadline. Um, and at that point, um, the employees will be issued an additional check on top of their regular paycheck. Um, it'll kind of figure out too, it'll be around the holidays, a little bit extra cushion for um, that time as well. Those are all of the um, the items that were recommended by the McGrath study. Are there any questions on those specifically?
Yeah, some questions.
Yeah.
The uh, the percentage of the employees, it'll be a max, right? Um, is it, I'm sure that department said, I'm guessing the department's heads have figured if you, if the, let's say it's fifty percent of the uh, employees are seasoned employees, right? With gets the max six week vacation. How does that impact the workforce? I guess what I'm saying is if you have, if you have a situation where you have a seasoned employees with a large week of vague, large number of weeks of vacation for that, them employees to get their vacation with forty hours buyback, it's really, really tricky with the current work. It might add members that we, people that we need to add to the workforce is what I'm saying.
Adding the vacation buyback and including the required mandatory five days of leave helps in that accrual as well. Um, one of the things that we have found though is that as people bump up against those maximums, they're taking that vacation time to use it down kind of at random days anyway, so it's kind of a balance there. Um, and probably relatively close to a wash, if that makes sense.
And you're asking more about staffing as well, most people are absent. It's it's no different than when um, our employees go on vacation currently anyway. Uh, we, we plan ahead and we make sure that we have adequate staffing.
Okay. Thank you, Gina.
Um.
Anna.
We get that a lot. Yeah. Any other questions on the items from McGrath Consulting? Yes.
Yeah, so um, I guess I I'm just uh, talking about the um, you know, the buyback and then the um, not being eligible for donation, like of the vacation or sick time. I mean, is that, is that really a a major sticking point? Just because I I just want to make sure that, you know, employees are covered if they need help with something.
You're talking about the shared uh, leave.
The shared leave policy, yeah, because because that'd be my only concern. I mean, maybe someone earlier in the year did the buyback or whatever, but later on, they got something happened, right? A financial issue or or what their family or whatever, you know, I I want to make sure that other employees still have that opportunity to help them out.
Yeah, and that's a conversation that we had with our directors as well. Um, currently, we are at first, we had, they're not allowed to take any shared leave policy after using the buyback at all. Um, that's why we cut it down to one year, um, because there's the, the thought process of you're gaining the funds from that, those forty hours and then also at a future date within the next year, also reaping the benefits of a shared use policy. Um, that is something we can continue to discuss, if that's something that you all would like to take out of the proposed policy. But that was our reasoning behind that.
I mean, that would be my recommendation to continue, to continue looking at it and maybe just take it out or somehow make it may make it so that if they do receive that, that help from employees and they're ineligible to buy back in future
in the future years or something like that. I mean, that could be a compromise. Any other comments on that specifically?
Anna, I just have one question. What, do we have an idea of what percentage of our employees are sixteen plus years? I mean, first of all, that's commendable and second, um, I I like what you're doing there, so.
I don't, um.
I can tell you in the Parks Department, it's no one. Right, Matt? But Matt pointed to Jack, so we know at least there's like, Jack and Chief and Tony.
Robert.
Yeah. Utilities, yeah. Yeah, Streets has Streets and Utilities.
No, not all the utilities, you've got some.
You got your new guys.
Yeah, you're about half, well, oh, on the, yeah, you are close to, you're definitely over.
Fifty percent in the utilities, yeah, that have been there a significant, I don't know if it's sixteen, but definite, definitely more than five to eight in in that ten to sixteen. And then.
Forty, forty one? Where's he at?
Forty.
Forty? Thirty eight?
Thirty eight, yeah.
Forty?
Yeah.
Forty years of experience.
Jim's at forty one in Carney.
Our vacation days negotiable in contract?
Currently, for regular employees, we do not, um, for.
Contract employees, that's been negotiated in my contract, but because it is outlined in the handbook, we don't, we are the same across the board with employees.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other items with the handbook, uh, to clean up language. Uh, we added language to allow for the negotiating, negotiation of starting pay rates. Uh, there wasn't a ton of wiggle room there and we wanted to make sure that we were competitive moving forward, especially with our current uh employment situation uh, here and everywhere else in the world. Uh, we clarified language pertaining to temporary assignments. Uh, what we currently had in there was if uh, someone stepped into a role for five or more days, um, the language stated made it sound like they would automatically be bumped up into that position. Uh, the language that is proposed clears that up to say that they specifically have to be in writing requested to be placed into that position to then receive that pay rate for those uh, job duties. Uh, we removed language associated with uh, comp hours taken. Uh, the language in there uh, was specifically speaking to comp hours taken prior to nineteen ninety six. We currently have one employee who was employed prior to that is Robert Matthews. Um, are almost forty year employee, so we clean that up. And with uh, comp hours, um, we don't have any comp hours outside of the eighty hour work period. If we have uh, any flex time, it's within one specific work period, uh, and that's how we deal with those flex hours. And then we did remove some language revising the amount of sick leave that's allowed to be taken for illness of immediate family members. Uh, our current handbook states that you can only take so many hours per year of your sick time for another family member. Uh, we believe that we're, we're currently not taking note of how many hours uh, an employee is taking for other people. Um, and if it's a sick time, we've got uh, parents and um, children here that are taking care of their parents and we believe that we don't need to be making sure that there's a certain amount of hours that uh, they're taking for just one specific item. So attached uh, to your packet is a red line and a clean version of the employee handbook. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm available for those. Staff is looking for direction on those proposed changes and policies. Um, and then um, pending further direction, these handbook updates would be placed on the July nineteenth Board of Alderman Meeting for approval. Um, and then I also did want to really quickly go over the final piece of the McGrath Consulting um, executive report. Um, the final piece is the update of the job descriptions. Currently, we have the first draft of those. Uh, we are actually midway through going through all of those with our department directors redlining, um, making those comments and corrections. We'll get those to McGrath Consulting by the end of this week. And then uh, what will happen after that, they will make those corrections, get those back to us and we will be um, bringing them back to you for implementation. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. You got like a minute and a half. Which one's? Matt, are they here for Parks Month?
This one?
Yeah.